We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ron?
All right, we'll do roll call after Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Priorities, okay?
Priorities. All right, Hillary, can we now have roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
Absent.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Barnes?
Here. All right. We're now on, since I jumped everything, the acceptance of the agenda. Are there any urgency items?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda. The following consented items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Any council member may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under the regular agenda. Ordinances: waive the reading by title of any ordinance under consideration at this meeting. Minutes: approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of January 15, 2019, and the special meeting of January 22, 2019. Warrants: approve the warrant register of January 29, 2019. Renew emergency resolution: confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency in the city of Lakeport. Receive and file the draft minutes for the January 16, 2019, MZAC meeting. Introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lakeport amending Chapter 9.8 of Title IX of the Lakeport Municipal Code regarding the hours of use of city parklands and set a public hearing for February 19, 2019. Would council like to move on to items? Anyone from the public like to speak to any of these? I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we accept the consent agenda as posted.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Do we have any forms filled out?
We have one.
We have one.
Yeah.
We've got one.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Hi, my name is Joanne Sacato and I'm the team lead for Lake Family Resource Centers California Hope Project. We are a project that comes into communities after a federally declared disaster and we are here for a temporary period of time to help our community recover. We offer free anonymous services to individuals, groups, organizations that help us understand our reactions to disaster, help us understand the phases of disaster and recovery from disaster, and offer emotional support and help people link to resources that are available that are fire-related resources in communities. So we will be here through the end of August and we just wanted to let the community know that we're here. You can reach us, we'll be leaving some brochures in the foyer, and you can reach me at 707-349-5203 or you can go on our website at lakefrc.org/CalHope or on our Facebook page as well. And so we're just letting you know that we're here and to please feel free to reach out as organizations, as individuals, as families.
Thank you.
There any other public comment? All right. Moving on. Receive an update on Lakeport Police Department calls for service, response times, arrests numbers, investigations data. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I just kind of wanted to give you a summary report of our activities over the last year, calendar year 2018. Starting with our response times for calls for service. The first being priority one calls, which are emergencies where someone needs help immediately. Our response time for that was three minutes average over all the calls. For priority two, which are non-emergencies but need to be dealt with immediately or as soon as possible, our times are 11 minutes on those. And then for priority three, which are cold calls to be handled when available, our average response time for those is 18 minutes. We had a total of 9971 incidents that our officers responded to in the city. 4968 of those were community-generated calls for service, meaning someone called the police and needed assistance for something. The other, basically the other half was officer-initiated activity, meaning an officer took the initiative, saw something, and responded to something or assisted a citizen, something like that, or to include traffic stops. Of those, 2,689 were traffic stops. The other 2,314 were everything else such as stopping to assist someone or making a pedestrian contact or looking into suspicious activity. And again, that was what they generated on their own observations. Part one crimes, those are crime data that we have to report to the FBI and the Department of Justice every year under the Part one crime reporting. And those include homicide, which we have zero, rape, which we have one, robberies, five, assaults, we have 62. 21 of those were aggravated. Burglaries, we had 48. Larcenies, we had 114, which is all other types of theft, not burglary. Excluding stolen vehicles, those are a separate category and we have 13. Arsons, we have zero. And domestic violence incidents, we have 34. Moving on to arrests, we had 91 felony arrests, 482 misdemeanors. And in the arrest status, we also have a separate category that we track for driving under the influence arrests. A total of 147 DUI-related crimes, we made 95 arrests for those 147 violations. So sometimes there'll be multiple counts or various different DUI-related charges with one arrest, but we had 95 arrests. One thing I wanted to note on that is almost half of those, 45 of those arrests were made by one single officer. That's Officer Casey Paul too, is very skilled at DUI and also was working a shift for most of the year that leads itself to more DUI arrests, which is the weekend night shifts. But he will be submitted to the Mothers Against Drunk Driving for the annual state and ad awards for California law enforcement later this spring. And then traffic-related, we had 35 reported collisions on our streets that we investigated. And then we had 15, which were property damage only that we didn't do an investigation on. Moving citations, we had 289, 50 other infractions, and 123 parking sites. Lastly, our detective was referred 72 serious criminal investigations, which are most of the time are felony, serious felony crimes, serious assaults, burglaries, sex offenses, things of that nature. And in the course of investigating those 72 cases, he wrote 20 affidavits for search warrants to seize evidence in those cases. So that's a recap of our basic activity for 2018 and I just wanted the council and the public to be aware of what our numbers were for the last year. So that's the report unless there's any questions.
I have a question on with, in the wake of 47 and 57, so you had 482 misdemeanors and 91 felonies. What percentage would you estimate of the misdemeanors would have formally been felonies or would any of those been felonies?
Some of them very likely would have been felonies. I don't, unfortunately, I don't have an exact number to break that down for you, but I would say a fair amount of those could have likely been felony cases, but again, I don't, I can't, it wouldn't be proper to give you the number because I have to break that out and kind of do some more research on it to figure that out. But I can, I can say that some of them would have been.
Okay. Thank you. Chief?
Thank you, Chief. Great work. Thank you.
Their response times?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty pleased with the response times, which I think are a little better than 2017.
Especially the cold calls, 18 minutes, it's like they, you know.
Yeah, I think that's still pretty good. Somebody, somebody calls the place and we can get there within 18 minutes.
Yeah. Well done.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin. Approve the request.
Public comment.
Oh, sorry. Yes, is there any public comment about the chief's report? Okay. Do I need a motion on this?
No, it's just for information.
Okay. Sorry about that. Now, Kevin? All right. Nick? Nick? This is community element.
We're on B.
Man, I'm just, oh. Okay, review and file the second quarter financial update and mid-year review. Fiscal year 2018-19.
You mean mayor, city council members, your council being asked to review and file this second quarter financial update. I think, I would just like to add that this is the, the plan is to do quarterly updates going forward. They'll probably be on consent agenda unless there's something significant that we want to bring your attention to point out. However, would also like to use this opportunity to solicit comments on, on any way I could provide this information more clearly to, to the council. It doesn't have to be here in this form, you could shoot me an email or let me know if there was something better that you would like to see. But what it will include is the attachments with the budget to actual financial statements for the general fund, water, and sewer funds. It will also include the investment updates of those CDs that we had purchased and it will include the project update attachments on a quarterly basis. We have the mid-year update information here. There is a schedule of budget adjustments that your council has already approved. At this time, staff is not requesting any further budget adjustments for mid-year. And just briefly going through the financial statement attachments, looking at, you know, the budget to actuals, everything's looking pretty good. I do have some notes that I'll cover really quickly. The taxes line, that 43% looks a little low. However, after I prepared this, we received the property tax payment from the county, which isn't included in this number, but because we don't receive until January. And it looks like it was better than we even, than we budgeted, so that looks good. The sales tax revenue is in line or slightly better than we were budgeting, so that tax line, while it looks like it's under, is actually not, it's actually doing very well. Other than that, I think if there's any questions, we're gonna just put up the list of projects. There was, the attachment to the staff report has 54 projects that are currently in process. As the schedule was going back and forth between departments, the second list, which has been printed in front of you, of another 30 projects was inadvertently left off of that single Excel. So going forward, we'll get those combined so it's in a single, a single document that's in a consistent format.
And we'd also like, could keep those updated for the council to see where our projects are.
And looking at the, I did want to point out the schedule on investments that's back in the staff report. Just to discuss the estimated current market value column, I know when I presented that item, you know, I explained that the CDs don't lose value and that we get, we get paid interest and the $200,000 at the maturity of the, of the CD, which is the case, that current market value is included. If we, if we needed to liquidate and get rid of those CDs today, that's what they're worth in the market today. So we could go sell them at that price. So I included that in the totals so you can see that if that was the case with interest and the current market value, we're still at a game. And I also wanted to point out that we got into that market at a very good time. The, I just talked to the investment broker that I worked with, and five-year CDs are currently being sold at about 3.05% and we were able to get ours at about 3.55%. So we're about half a basis point better than what the market is doing now. So other than that, if there's any questions on the project update or the financial statements?
Any questions? Any questions from council? Any public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to council. There's no motion needed for this item. Wonderful. Thank you very much, Nick.
Thank you.
Great job. All right. Now, does it get to be Kevin's turn?
Now you're stuck with me, yes.
Approve the requested budget adjustment in the amount of $17,980 for the completion of an annexation financial analysis study for the South Lakeport Annexation Project and direct staff to finalize the required application for annexation with LAPCO and prepare a resolution of application for the city council's approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, good evening. As you're no doubt aware, our stated goal of your council for this year is the completion of the South Lakeport Annexation. The purpose of this evening's agenda item is to provide you an update of staff's progress in submitting an official annexation application to the Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAPCO, the responsible agency for the review of jurisdictional boundary matters including annexations. Additionally, staff, as the mayor put in there, is also requesting your approval of a budget adjustment in the amount to $17,980 to complete a fiscal analysis necessary for the submittal of that annexation application. Just some real quick facts in regards to the annexation. The South Lakeport Annexation area includes approximately 125 acres and consists of 52 individual parcels along South Main Street and Soto Bay Road, just south of the existing city limits. This area has been within the city's recognized sphere of influence or probable boundary of future service area since at least the mid-1980s. The city already provides municipal service to this area. In 2016, LAPCO approved the pre-zoning for this area, a precursor to the annexation in addition to reaffirming the area within the city's sphere of influence. It would be an understatement to say that this annexation has been controversial. The city has attempted to meet with the county regarding this matter, but they have informed us they are not interested in meeting. The county has opposed actions by the city in the past for annexation efforts. They have threatened to disapprove any encroachment that we may apply for to loop our water system regardless of annexation and even requested LAPCO to remove this area from our sphere of influence in 2016. The reason annexation is so important right now can be narrowed down mostly to two primary reasons. The first is the need to provide public drinking water and install fire hydrants to this heavily developed commercial and industrial area. And second, the timing and need to install that public water system is made further important by the fact that a large road winding project, including sidewalks, underground utilities, there's a number of other elements of this large public works project, is slated to be constructed in this area. It's suffered several delays due to environmental and some state budgeting issues, but tentatively slated in and around 2021. And it's critical that the water service, which would include main service laterals to requisite parcels and hydrants, be in place prior or in conjunction with that project, you know, to kind of delete the need to tear up a brand-new roadway. Other important issues requiring annexation in the near future include the fact that there have been several notice of violations issued by the Department of Water Resources for water systems in this area. A lot of these parcels are on private wells, but some of them are classified as small water systems, which are regulated by the water, by the Department of Water Resources. For a number of different reasons, they include inadequate infrastructure or poor water quality, some of these have been served with notices that they need to either hook into a public water system or perform some drastic improvements to their system. We've been informed by Water Resources that they have held off on some of the harsher enforcement of this due to the fact that they thought that this annexation matters would be taken care of by now. Staff has been working diligently on an application to LAPCO these past several months and it's nearly complete. We expect to submit a final application this spring. In quick note, the application would include a statement of justification, plan for services, legal description, a property tax sharing agreement, CEQA documentation, a resolution of intent from the city, and honoring the request of LAPCO Executive Director, a fiscal analysis analyzing both the costs and revenues to the city and the county as a result of this project. Controversy over the property tax sharing agreement has caused much stress between the county and the city. The city has tried to negotiate with the county on a mutually beneficial agreement, but the county refuses to meet with us. As such, the city plans to move forward with its existing agreements that were approved in both 2001 and 2002. This agreement makes reference to a tax sharing structure. I believe it's modeled after an earlier annexation in 1997. Following the submittal of the LAPCO application, just quickly the process that goes through, the executive director would review that application for completeness and then schedule a notice of application and public hearing and then make a decision to either approve or ask LAPCO to make a decision to either approve, deny, or modify the proposal. After that time, a second public hearing would be set, which is often called the protest hearing, where notification is given to property owners and registered voters in the area. Depending on the number of protests received, the annexation would then maybe subject to an election. At this time, the city is preparing to circulate the prepared environmental document in accordance with CEQA and then finalize the annexation application, including fiscal analysis, and then submit it to LAPCO. Following that submittal, the city intends to embark on an extensive outreach campaign to talk directly with property owners, business owners, residents out in that area. At this time, it would be mostly mainly to kind of clear up the air. There's a lot of misinformation, we believe, out there and so we just want to try and provide the facts and we believe once those facts are kind of out there in the air that we think that we can make a good case of why annexation into the city is beneficial. So the budget adjustment has a motion before you, but mostly this was an opportunity to kind of provide an update on where we are at with that city council goal of submitting an application. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions from council? All right. Any questions from the public or comment?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. As you know, I inherited this situation and, but I made a promise to the voters when I got elected that I was going to either annex or not annex. It was time to make a decision and figure out where we're going to be. The county did sit down with the city many times, actually our CAO and Margaret, we thought we had a tax sharing agreement. We thought we were good. I came here with our, our CAO and when we sat down, what councilmember Stacy Matina told us was not what we had agreed to. The county is in no position to, to give up any tax revenue. We, we just aren't. I, I wish we could just, you know, give it away and, and be able to go along our merry way, but we, we just can't. I've had many, many phone calls this last 24 hours from people from the South Main area demanding me that I come down here and I make sure that I am fighting for them. They have no interest in being annexed with the city. Yes, they need water and when we left that last meeting with the city realizing that we were not going to be able to make a tax sharing agreement, we did not just sit on our hands and do nothing. We have been working diligently to try to figure out a proper water source for South Main Street and get the pipes in the ground before the roads are redone. We do have money set aside to do part of the project. We have submitted a application to USTA and we're actually waiting to see if that's been approved, but because of the federal shutdown, that was, it's been dragged in a little bit. But we have every intention to bring water to South Main. Let's see what else I had on my notes. I think we have many property owners here that will also speak, but I just wanted to make sure you knew the full story, that we have been trying to work and we will have proper water down there. Thank you.
Suzanne Lyons, I'm the alternate LAPCO representative for the public and I think it gets very confusing here when we're talking about tax sharing because my understanding, what we, what Kevin just mentioned was property tax sharing. I don't know if that's the big argument or if the argument is the sales tax. So is there some clarification here about what we're really arguing about and are we, are we solving the actual problem or are we somehow not looking at what the real, what the real problem is? I know years ago, at least eight years ago, when this was still going on, nobody really had a good idea of what the actual costs and what it actually meant to the county or to the city because it's a, it's a big project that's being taken on down there and it looks like it's going to cost somebody a lot of money in the beginning and I'm still unclear as to what the cost benefits are to the different agencies and it seems that, has anybody actually sat down and figured out what the short term and what the long term is going to be because I haven't seen that yet.
That's actually what's on the agenda is we're working with consultants to come up with those.
Fiscal analysis.
Fiscal analysis for now.
Been a lot of years waiting for that.
I am co-owner of Hillside Power Sports Marine at 2575 and 2585 South Main and there is some confusion in my mind of this sharing of property tax, sales tax. And again, when we moved to the address we're at now in 2000, we bought the property in 2015. Yeah, it was a concern that a major tax raiser for the city of Lakeport left and we are now in the county and I think between us and Mindo Mill and Strohmeyer's down at the end are probably one of the three major sales tax revenue incomes for the county. And I, I think we need to have some clarification on that, but I'm just voicing my opinion. I am against the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any answer? Yes, please.
The only required agreement is for property tax for an annexation, and it doesn't affect the property tax for the property owner. It's just the share between the county and the city. It's what, it's no extra tax for the actual property owner. So the only agreement at LAFCO, which is part of the agreements that we have in the past with the county, already signed by the county, does, we do have an agreement on the property tax. Now...
What is the business on there? What makes the business on the sales tax change?
The sales tax would change, there would be the additional tax that the sales tax the city has that gets passed on to the consumer when they purchase their items. That's the only thing, but there's not an agreement with the county that needs to be done for sales tax.
Mr. Wetz?
Yes, sir. Okay. As far as water out there, we dug a new well for the Coquitie out, and it meets state specs 100%, and they've been using it for about four months now. Had been no problem. It has to be approved every month by every 30 days to 60 days by the state, which has always passed. And what it amounts to, that solved the water problem out there, but there is a lot of good wells out there. The only thing is, our other well has a 10-foot seal, which was required when it was built, but now you've got to have 50. But that one, my associate uses the water herself, drinks it, it's fine. She had died from nothing. She had it routed away, so we're okay. Okay, the next thing is, I feel we're getting rewrote to a point, and I feel a guy that's got the most information of all of this and been 101 with every property owner out there is Anthony Farrington. He's had three meetings at Mendel Mill, and every single person was against it, except I think the movie theater guys said, "Well, I don't know," and I still don't know him. But that's his choice. As far as the rest, I think that they've got a belly full of the cities trying to shove something down their throat, and I believe before it's over with, they'll pull their money and go to Farrington and put it all straight in the city out once and for all. Do a class action lawsuit and make everything work, and that'll solve a few problems, including yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a clarification, too, that our water system wouldn't require anyone to hook up. They didn't need to hook up to it. It's our plan for it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm John Dilcigore, retired maintenance specialist, worked for White County for 23 years. Yeah, this has been an ongoing problem. There are wells out there that are very good wells, and there are wells out there that are bad. It's normal throughout the whole county. I received notice on my property. I live over there on Parkway, north of this town. I'm opposed to this. This is ridiculous. It's a money, I hate to say it, grab on the basis of trying to solve problems for this whole area. I've been aware of this problem down on the south side for a long time. Yeah, you have good wells on the basis of gas stations and what is it? Hold on a second. The intersection there coming off of the highway has got really two great wells. Yeah, I cut and drilled the well over there at the theater. Basically, I was the well expert for the county. We do have some poor wells on the basis of when they had the, I'm also on Hazpan at the time. We have some, a couple wells are pretty bad because of that accident happened with the tanker that caused problems. They finally got it resolved by going through three engineers. What I'm getting at is the basis of there are facilities there all up and down the line that don't need this program. The road there is horrible, bottom line. Trucks are beating up everything. But the thing was, it was always Karen Mackey supervisor back at my time, and they were looking at putting everything underground in combination, trying to resolve things. They never had a game plan with you folks or with the county. Hi, Kevin. It's a basis of, I'm not happy because my tax rules, a combination of what's going to be leveled here is going to go up. And North Lake Water Project, basically, I was involved in that 20 years ago when they put the whole system in through the state. You guys have got to come up with a sound resolution. If the county doesn't want to work with you, you guys got to get together. It's a basis of just a discussion to see what's going on. A lot of those companies down there on the south shore end, they don't need this. They really don't. And to me, that's kind of like a land grab. Yeah, it'd be nice to have the roads done, and there are water systems that have a balancing The North Lake Water System, when that was put in, there was major on the lake shore, really good quality water systems that had to fork up a lot of money to get hooked up because at that time Karen Mackey, in combination with the county, was moving with the state to get, you know, things resolved, not only in that area, but they were dealing with Middletown Sewer, and they were dealing with Soda Bay Water. They got feelings from the state. So as a property owner, I don't like the idea of the comment about parcels. Basically, APN numbers are set up by the state, and it's a combination of you have problems going throughout to say, okay, who do we pull in to support the dollar signs it's going to cost all of this? Like I'm saying, I could simply say, being at the north side, I really don't care about the south side, but as a citizen and as a county employee, I do care. There's got to be a balancing act, and I really say, this is like the Democrats and Republicans in government, you guys got to interact together because this issue is so old and it's tiresome. Have a good day.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Bill Graham. It seems like they've been mentioning a lot on the water issue and drinking water, but from my understanding is that part of this water is for fire suppression, and I'm, you know, wondering if they've taken that into consideration on the hookups, because well capacity a lot of times won't necessarily do for a firefighting type. And that this also, the amount of the budget increase to do the financial for the annex, does that include, I guess you already said it didn't include any of the sales tax sharing, just the property tax? Thank you.
What was your last question? I missed that.
There's a sharing agreement for sales tax as well as property tax.
Oh, wait. Funny to say, we'll take into account of the sales tax, but that's not, it's an analysis of all the fiscal...
Yeah, the cost of the...
But it's not an agreement that we have to have in place before the annexation. It's just a fiscal analysis of the area. It will take into consideration the sales tax in the fiscal analysis.
It would give you the, how long it'd take to pay back the cost of the infrastructure, right?
Yes, it would incorporate what the cost of the water line would be to be down there, what the city's costs are to put infrastructure out there.
Right.
That would include that in the financial.
Length of time for a payback.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah. It would talk about the cost of it, not how we're going to pay it back, but what the costs are versus what the revenues are. It would give some analysis on that.
Thank you, Bill. Any other member of the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to council.
Well, I don't think that, you know, we're like moving forward with annexation today, and I think that I can honestly say that I believe in the six years that I've been sitting up here, long before that, that there was an extremely, I would say, aggressive campaign to give a one-sided kind of depiction of what was going on and what was going to go on by the city, by Anthony Farrington, and he did an excellent job, and he's the go-to guy if you're against annexation. But the city of Lakeport has a necessity and obligation to grow, and the sphere of influence has been around for a very, very long time, and the water problems that are out there right now, in some places, the Department of Water Resources has looked the other way because it was a given. This is a sphere of influence. LAFCO's been talking about it for eons, and a lot of us have dedicated our primary goal to take care of this, to increase the availability of resources and all that kind of stuff, whereas the county, they love it the way it is, and if it stayed that way, it's great because they take the money that they draw from the tax base, and they've essentially done nothing with it. And we have plans to loop the water line. We're already providing sewer out there right now, and we're not for the sewer, there would be issues with that. But I don't think today is the time that we talk about that because we've been kind of been hornswoggled. We've had people go behind this, telling one side of the story, and people don't know what it is. And as far as the county, many meetings? No, we did not have many meetings. In fact, we had maybe two meetings, and the second or the third meeting, we had right in that room, right there behind that clock, we're not talking about it. That was the meeting. That is not a meeting. The tax-sharing agreement was completely negotiable. We put the first, Stacy put it out, says, here's what we're offering, and we were prepared to do whatever was necessary to get this done. The tax-sharing thing is the least of our problems. We're trying to serve the future citizens of Lakeport that are in South Lakeport. This was something that seemed to me that Rob Brown kind of just came in and said, "We're done. We're done. We're not talking about it." And that was the meeting. And so that's not a meeting. A meeting is when you have the meeting of minds. You negotiate. You talk about the benefits that the people are going to get and what you're going to get in return. They're worried about losing their revenue. That's all they cared about. We were prepared, at the worst case, to give them much, if not all of that eventually, if that's what it would take. But that never happened because we didn't have a meeting. So we have been kind of been on the backseat of this thing. We haven't been able to give our side. It's all been one side, and when you hear an argument, or there's an accident, or there's a robbery, or whatever it is, there's two sides, and you've only been given one side, and he went there right up front, face to face, and gave you the story. You haven't heard the other side. This is what we're doing now to prepare for the other side. And I think that there's an extremely complicated issue, but there's so much more benefits that will be accrued to the citizens of Lakeport if it's a city rather than out there in the county. And at this point, I think we just need to go forward with the requested money that we need to do the analysis, and then we can go out and tell the real story, not some, you know, fear factor, oh, you're going to get all these taxes. The only thing that's going to happen is that sales tax will go up, and the money will go to roads. What a horrible thing. We voted that in by a majority, and we held it back when we put down Proposition 6 because we want to fix the roads, and they will be our roads, not county roads, and it will be a priority in our small area, not in a huge county that goes all over the place trying to fix every pothole from Middletown all the way to Upper Lake. This will be our town, and we will take care of it better than the county ever did, and we will use the money for you, not take the money there and divert it wherever the need is. And that's what the county's doing now, in my opinion. So I think we need to move forward, do the analysis, and go from there.
Thank you, Kevin.
So I think we'll have plenty of opportunities in the future to talk about the annexation and its benefits and the real attractions in the future, but what I see before us tonight is the opportunity to gain more solid data that will help us and help the public moving forward. Usually, you know, it's been such a whirlwindy, topsy-turvy process that the only way that we can move forward with clarity or not move forward with clarity is by gaining more data, and that's what we're looking to today. I thought it was a really good suggestion that we include this as part of our packet. I support getting this fiscal analysis done.
Well said. It's unfortunate how much misinformation is still out there. It's mind-boggling, but if there's, are you ready for a question?
I just had a quick question. This report that we'd be getting back would be showing the financial consequences for the city and the county as well, right? Will it be a comprehensive study?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so it'll show us, okay. So we'll have the whole picture after that, and then there will be nothing but... Yeah. So if there's no further comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the requested budget adjustment in the amount of $17,980 for the completion of an annexation fiscal analysis study for the South Lakeport Annexation Project, and direct staff to finalize the required application for annexation with LAFCO and prepare a resolution of application for the city council's consideration.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on, Public Works Director. Approve the concept of a black box theater at West Side Community Park, Phase 3, to be developed by the Lake County Theater Company. I will be recusing myself from this item as my wife is a non-compensated board member for the company. Councilmember Turner will be taking over the meeting format.
Feels good to be back in this chair. Doug, would you like to go ahead with the presentation, please?
Yes. Councilmembers, before you is a request from the Lake County Theater Company, and what they're requesting for is your approval of the conception of a black box theater located at West Side Park in Phase 3. And so I'm just going to go ahead and kind of go down through the staff report. I think that will probably be the most expedited manner to deal with this. So what they're asking is for council to approve the concept of a black box theater at West Side Park, Phase 3, and to give staff direction for the Lake County Theater Company to proceed with the feasibility portion of their project. The Lake County Theater... The Lake County Theater Company is seeking a permanent location to build a Black Box And I'm going to go with acronym. The LCTC is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that provides live theater for Lake County. One of those productions is our Shakespeare in the Park. That is performed by them, along with other plays that they perform at the Soper East. The idea behind this would be for them to have their own theater facility as, for the Soper East, they have to rent that facility, and the rents are fairly high. And so they're looking for a place where they can practice and put on their events without having that large expenditure for rent, and also in order to put on other community activities like theater for children, acting classes, and, you know, just kind of a whole concept of theater at one location where, you know, they have the keys, and it's their facility. They can leave their props and not have to move them out of, you know, their rented locations and this type of thing. So they came and made a presentation to the Lakeport Park and Recreation Commission. They also made a presentation to the Westside Park Committee. Both groups are supporting their endeavor to find a permanent location to set up a theater. They're proposing to locate the theater on the southeast corner of Phase 3. Everybody, there was a map provided with your staff report. So is there any questions on where that location is? Okay, it's where the big, basically where the big grinding's pile is, is kind of where that location would be. So the, the LCTC came and met with staff. We met with them to look at their concept and try to get a grasp on what they were wanting to do. At that time, we had a lot of conversation about what really is all involved in setting up a theater or anything else on public property, city property, the need for some infrastructure to go with that, utilities, and all these other costs. They had a rough layout of what they thought their cost was going to be, but when staff was reviewing it with them and bringing up some additional things that they hadn't considered, it became pretty obvious that they had a little bit more to do for their, you know, to really get a feasible idea of what the true cost was going to be. And it was decided in that meeting that really the best thing would be to come to council and get council's approval for the concept. So before they started spending money on engineering fees and, you know, all of these other costs, that they know that if they do that, and it is feasible, and, you know, we bring this, get ready to bring this back to council, council is in favor of going ahead and working out some kind of an agreement with them for their Black Box Theater. So what we're asking council is for approval of their, of the concept, and so that when they proceed, they're going to know that they're working towards a goal, which would then be come back to council with plans and a, an agreement proposal to get council approval on that. Am I, it's been a rough week, so am I making any sense whatsoever?
Great, yes.
So we're not asking you to approve plans or anything like that. We're just asking you to approve the concept. The council is in favor of placing a Black Box Theater at Westside Park, Phase 3, if they can meet all of our requirements.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Let's open it up to the public. Any member of the public care to address this item? This is a totally cool item.
We have members in the committee here.
Suzanne Williams. When the theater company brought their plans to Parks and Rec, I was kind of surprised because I know that we have a theater here in town, and I wondered why they were going to go to Westside Park when we have a theater here in town. But after their presentation and seeing what they needed, one of the things that happens is if you're doing a production of something that's a one-dayer, it's not too expensive to do it at Soper East. But if you're doing something where you have to have practices and practices and be able to rent a property over a period of time, it gets to be pretty pricey. The other thing that they brought out was that they have to store their props and their costumes, and that they're paying like $600 a month just to store their costumes someplace. So this would be something that would not only let them have a theater where they could do productions, but it would really help them out as far as having a place to work from. I was really impressed with what they brought us, and we recommend, it was something that I was surprised when they came and did their presentation, that it really did seem to make sense.
Good evening, Will Deschak. I will reveal my age and my longevity history. When I returned to Lake County in the early 80s, I became the Executive Director of the Lake County Arts Council for five years. And one of the long-term plans with the theater groups that were throughout Lake County, there was the Lakeport Players, there was the Lake County Repertory Theater, there was the Middletown Group, there was a Clear Lake Group. The idea all those years was to have a dedicated facility for theater company or theater companies or traveling theater groups to actually do performance. So this is a continuing effort. In the early 80s through the early 90s, looked at various arrangements, using the fairgrounds, different facilities, bringing in bleachers in order to have great seating, using the museum at Lower Lake, the schoolhouse, which does have a stage, just finding facilities with stages. The schools at different times have been very accommodating, but they also have their curriculum and their own needs. So to have a dedicated space is a priority. And as you know, I've done a lot of fundraising for the Soper East Theater, and it is definitely a community asset. But it also has to do multiple programmings in order to bring in the revenue to pay the overhead and all that goes on there. So this will be a major project for the community. Definitely fundraising is going to have to happen. This is one of the things when we had the initial discussion at the Westside Park Committee Meeting, and Dennis Rollins is not here, but he's been involved in all of the discussions and has been supportive and has seen the interest in expanding what can happen at Westside Park and have a diversity of activities. So I think there was buy-in from that group, definitely there was interest from the Parks and Rec Commission, and I think from the community, once they learn more about it and have an understanding of what this could do for the greater community, but particularly for Lakeport, and I think it could be an asset to what we have to offer here overall. So I hope the council will consider the concept and be on board to encourage the efforts of the Lake County Theater Company. Still going to be a long road for them, and I think they're starting to understand that that might be the case, but I think they have a lot of energy and a lot of passion for doing this. So thank you for your positive approach.
My name is Cindy Forbes, and I am the Treasurer of Lake County Theater Company. Yes, we are facing the reality of what it would cost. We have talked to some engineers who are supportive of our theater. We haven't paid any money yet on that because it's too much for us to do right now. And we do realize that working at Westside Community Park is going to be an enormous investment just to prepare the land, certainly more than we had anticipated, looking just at the rough concept of it. We have been told it could cost up to $150,000. At this point, we have $84,000 in our theater fund. We raise between 15 and 20 a year for the theater. So it's, it takes time. It's just for our theater, you know, to build a structure. I wanted to talk with you because I have seen our city recently become much more progressive in obtaining other properties as part of the city of Lakeport. And I am going to ask all of you to please keep your minds open to, with our dream, keep us in mind, that if there is a property where there's an opportunity to even share space, even if it was storage space, space to have workshops for children, please keep us in mind, we do have money for these things, and we just have not found the place to set ourselves down. So I sure hope it's Lakeport. We love being in the city and performing here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this item? Not, we'll bring it back to council.
Well, I think that the fact that they have an organization that's actively raising money, actively looking for a place, and that we have a potential to do something like this in a city property, and I don't think that when you talk about theaters, and you talk about the Soper East, and you talk about the other theater, there's no more competition than you have having, you know, the Mirage next to Treasure Island across the street. It actually, I think, increases the availability of options for people to do theater presentations. And I, we've talked before about the city of Eureka and their movement towards a more, you know, artistic community, and I think that anything that we can do to help kind of produce a concept of this and see if it's actually going to be feasible for them. And it's always nice when someone comes forward and says, yes, we have money to do some of this, and we're willing to do a lot of the fundraising ourselves, and they're not asking us to like, you know, build it for them. But I think that everyone appreciates some level of art and productions and have been involved in them and would like their kids to be in them and like to go to see them. And I think that this kind of thing is exciting to me. I was kind of a little bit surprised to see that it was only like 99 people. But that shows even more why that even when you have a facility like Soper East and it holds like 220 people, or at times, I don't know exactly what it was, having done the Lip Sync for a number of years, you know, if you only have 220 people or 99 people, it's hard to create a lot of revenue, so you need to do the production over and over. And if you have to take it down because you have other events, I mean, in a situation where you had your own theater, you could leave it up, and then the next week you go and it's all set up, you don't have to, you know, move all this stuff to storage. So I can see where it would really be something that once they got something like this, it would be extremely beneficial, and they would be able to actually properly produce more revenue after something like this was put together, if they were even able to get a loan, and that money that you're putting out in storage and rental of the Soper East and all that kind of stuff, I can see where that would really be a benefit. But I think the idea of a local, you know, separate theater of, you know, in and of itself along with the Soper East that can provide other services for other things, I think would be a great opportunity.
And such a cool addition to the park.
Yeah. And then, you know, the working in partnership and using different, you know, working together, doing different things, I mean, who knows where this could go? But I think that moving more towards the arts is always a positive thing because it kind of elevates you above that, you know, strictly we're worried about food and shelter, and we're worried about art, and we're worried about living at a higher standard, and this is where art comes in, trying to make Lakeport a better place. I'm off.
I don't have anything further.
I think that Suzanne and Will have both made really good points. I met with them sometime over the last year, wasn't it, Margaret? And they made a really good presentation. This is a focused and energetic group, and, yeah, they may have a long way to go, but I'm actually really impressed at how far they've made it already. You know, they've shown diligent and consistent focus on what the goal was for this structure and the fundraising that is very impressive for a community group. And the shows are just awesome.
Suzanne, I'm looking forward to more shows. You're all so great.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, the one thing, though, that I think that helps with fundraising is if you actually have a tangible, realistic, discernible, you know, view of what it is going to look like, rather than this nebulous idea that, you know, someday we'd like to build a theater, would you like to donate, you know, $10,000? And it's like, what is it going to look like? Well, we don't know, and we're not really sure where it's going to be, and it could be in Middletown, it could be over in Hopland, we're not really sure where the property's available. But I mean, having an idea of exactly, and a concept like this, I think could really help move the process along, however arduous and difficult it might be.
Good point. Even though the building looks kind of nebulous, but that's the point. That's the whole, that's, yeah, it was done on purpose. So, all right, I think it's a great idea, too.
Madam Mayor, Acting Madam Mayor? If there's nothing else, I'll move to approve the concept of the Black Box Theater at Westside Park, Phase 3.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll bring the real mayor back in.
Thank you, Maria. Now, moving on to emergency spill response trailer. Adopt a resolution accepting grant funds from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Office of Spill Prevention and Response for Oil Spill Response Equipment, and authorize the city manager to sign purchase order with Global Diving and Salvage Incorporated for the construction and delivery of the oil spill response trailer.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to have Ron Ladd do this presentation since he's the one that had all this work in doing the grant application, and has been working with all the FEMA and all the hazard mitigation. So, Ron, would you mind doing the presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I mean, Tim read what is being asked of the city council. A little bit of the background on this is we're always looking for alternative funding sources to provide better services in Lakeport, and we came across the grant opportunity through the Department of Fish and Wildlife Oil Spill Response, and we applied for and were successful in tentatively receiving a $35,000 grant with zero matching funds and very little maintenance. It's really a great grant to have developed for us a spill response trailer that is for our area, specific to our geography and what our response needs would be. And it would be a fully stocked custom trailer with all the materials needed for a basic response, and also a staff training for 10, 10 people. And that's basically the background on that, and we would like to move forward with that.
Which would have been very convenient a couple few weeks ago.
So you have staff training for 10 people so that if someone's not on duty or they're on vacation, you have coverage for no matter any particular situation? Or if you need more people, or is that what you would need? Or do you have, would you have a need for more than 10, or do you even add more than 10 employees? Or should you bring in some city council members?
So, yeah, I think 10 would definitely cover us, and it's not to train our staff to be hazardous material experts. It's very basic, at a safe distance, contain the spill from spreading and things like that. that. So I just think it's a great deal. It's one of the best grants I've seen.
So is there, and I don't know if this goes to you, Ron, or to Doug, but isn't there like some kinds of penalties or different types of issues when spills enter into waterways or into sewer systems or is that just something that, well, it's an act of God, you know, this truck fell over and, or do we have like, do we have to be responsible for that and so we need to be right on that or how does that work?
I think a bunch of different scenarios.
Yeah, I can take that for Ron. It really depends on where the source point originates. So if it originated from a city facility or city equipment, yes, we would definitely be on the hook for that. The new MPDS and some of the new enforcement of the state's coming out, it's looking like we're gonna start being responsible for all of our drainage systems within our community so that if it enters the lake through one of our conveyance systems via culvert or ditch, there's looking like there could possibly be some liability upon the city because it came through our conveyance. And so we're still researching that. The smoke hasn't cleared on that, but this would definitely be a huge assistance in us quickly being able to quickly contain any kind of what they call an unauthorized release. This is a little bit different equipment. I mean, this, right now, we stock a very large supply of spill response materials, but this has, gonna have some different types of apparatus in it. What we're really looking for is what they call a curtain. Right now, all of the containment that we put out floats on top of the water and tries to absorb and catch the product as it's floating on top of the water. The problem we have with our lake is that in windy or rough weather, it moves up and down so much that it actually gets underneath our floating type of booms, they call them as a boom. Well, what we're trying to do in this trailer and what Ron's been working on is this called a curtain. So it has a tube on the top that keeps it up above the water, but then it has a piece that extends down about 12 to 18 inches underneath it so that it won't let the product, and usually it's petroleum, get underneath the boom so we get better containment. Then we spread out the other absorbents to soak it up with inside that containment. So this is really gonna add to our ability to keep it isolated and keep it contained to as small as area as possible. That's why we're so excited that we got this opportunity because the state's gonna pay for it.
Anything else from council?
So much, Ron.
Great job, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Great job. Any comment from the public? All right, I'll bring it back to council. There's no further comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution accepting grant funds from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Office of Spill Prevention and Response for oil spill response equipment and authorize the city manager to sign a purchase order with Global Diving and Salvage Incorporated for the construction and delivery of the oil spill response trailer.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. All right, council communications. Margaret?
No report.
No report.
No report.
Chief, no further report.
Kevin?
No one more.
Kevin?
I just wanted to say that we have got a, at our last LAPD meeting, we have a little flyer and I think Suzanne Lyons was in here talking about different committees and how maybe the other people that are not on the committees, they never know what we even do. And so I thought there was a very nice flyer and I plan on bringing copies of that to the next meeting to let them know what the Lake Area Formation Commission is all about and how it's involved in things like annexation in different utility districts and why they do what they do and why it's so important. And it's just a little flyer, but it does sound like it does a lot. LAPD is a very important organization and it's good that all of us understand it a little better. So I'll be bringing that next time. And thanks to John Benoit for providing that to us. And we have a very comprehensive one if you want to go online, but I think this one's way better.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kenny. Stacy?
No report.
Maria?
I have a couple things. One, I wanted to invite everybody to join at Lakeport Police Department this Saturday. What time is that, Chief? Eight?
Eight o'clock to noon.
Eight to noon for the Donuts and Coffee for Special Olympics. The other one is second Sunday breakfast to help the senior center, Lakeport Senior Center, is this Sunday. And that's all.
And if I could just add, of course, you don't have to stay the whole four hours.
And you don't have to show up for four hours either.
There's no ceremony?
And you can show up later with a baseball cap, you know.
Yes, absolutely. Because it's Saturday. It counts as Saturday. Thank you for mentioning that. All right, and I have no report, so we will adjourn the meeting.